Like to call to order the May 1st, 2024 Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting of the Greenfield School Committee. At 3:04 PM. And. I will. Take a roll call for myself. Vice Chair Martini present, member Childs.
Present.
Member Denise. Is not present with us today because she's not able to attend. We have a quorum. So with that, let's dive right into the agenda, the first item of which is an update on the FY25 budget.
Well, I will start and then Andy certainly can fill in the blanks. We went to Ways and Means meeting for our operating budget. Last week. I think last Tuesday, if I can recall correctly. Lot of questions about. You know, specific changes, a lot of the staffing changes that we talked about at the school committee meeting with the budget presentation, like the fluctuation from one line to the next that we talked about. Some questions from. One of the city councilors about why we pay for parking at the church parking lot. I'll share with both of you, it is not just our buses that park there. We do not have sufficient parking at the middle school in and of itself. For all of the central office staff and the middle school staff. So it's not just a matter of moving buses. So I don't know if that resolved the question, but. That was a topic of discussion. I'm trying to think if there was anything else significant. There was some public comments on the front end. About. Priorities for music program, but the. Parent had some. Made some statements that suggested some. Incorrect information about the budget process, like there should be a line for music supplies in the high school budget, for an example. So Andy spent, I think, a fair amount of time outlining for Ways and Means why. Accounts are the way they are, what we've talked about at school committee in terms of really needing to streamline. The accounts and the challenge that we will have, the committee will have for a while. In terms of comparing apples to apples, if we were to. Connect FTEs to each budget line, we can do that, but over time that won't really represent the FTEs in each building. Because they might move from one line to the next year to year. So we had quite a bit of that conversation and. Outside of that, I. I feel like we did a pretty thorough discussion and I think. I think the committee is aware. The mayor. Recommended a 4% budget increase for the schools instead of the 5.86 that the committee. Voted on, but. We had a. We identified a billing issue that had been in place with Kosmuskis and so we have. A credit with the company, so we're going to take that credit next year to help offset some of the difference between school committees budget and what the mayor moved forward. And then we will also. Use some special ed revolving to fund some of the special ed tuition. So we were able to address the mayor's budget amount without any impact on staffing. To address the mayor's, we do have a few staff reductions due to enrollment. We had bubbled classes that are now. Not going to be in the buildings where they were and such, so we do have a couple of potential staffing changes due to that not due to the budget. So now we wait for the end of Ways and Means meetings and then it goes to city council. They also did fund the money requested with the for the elevator repair. Ways and Means. Did recommend that funding.
Okay. Questions, member Childs?
Um. I. Don't think I really have questions because the only one would have been about the staffing reductions being due to the bubble class issue, and I think it was pretty well explained.
Okay, I have a question, so you get another minute to think on it. Are there any potential non-staff reductions in relation to the mayor's budget? As compared?
Not at this point.
Okay.
No, we've. I say that, like I said, we could address the entirety of the difference between what school committee voted and the mayor's recommendation. By using special ed revolving and then with the transportation credit. So at this point, no, but certainly. Any further reduction. Could result in non-staff. Changes.
Okay.
We have, you might be happy to hear this, if I haven't shared it, forgive me, I'm not remembering if I shared this with the full committee, I think I did. We did hire the two music positions. Okay, Anne saying yes, so I did talk about this.
Yeah.
Which is, which is positive, we hired an elementary library media specialist, right Karen, that was yes, so we're very excited about that. So, you know, and. That's good to get those hires now for next year is very encouraging. I think it is unfortunate that. We potentially have opportunities to interview and hire people because many of the districts. In Western Mass are having to make substantial budget reductions. So there, you know, we have applicants because their jobs are getting cut in other places.
Okay. What were the numbers on the credit that we had with Kosmuskis and. The use of the special education revolving?
Andy will know.
The credit was $130,838.40. And we ended up using. The transportation revolve or spit tuition revolving, the balance that $163,934.
Okay.
And even then, if I may, the. When we built the budget. The amount that we normally use out of the transfer, or I should say the special education tuition revolving. Is, give you an idea. $300,000, so not that we're quote unquote hoarding money or anything, but it does give us. Flexibility for any unanticipated special education expenses that might occur next year where we're. We're using just about a little more than half of what we normally project to use each year. So. It's not decimating anything where we're even, so let's play out the scenario as far as a concern of some non-operating. Cuts that if, you know, city council were to do something. There's, we would be able to have discussion as to whether or not we would even need to make those cuts.
I. I would like to amend your statement, Andy, a little bit to say, we still could have unanticipated special ed changes. Even now, I just don't want anyone to think that even though we're in May, that because we are in May. The special ed budget is static at this point. It, it most definitely is not.
Okay. Was there anything else that you thought was important to add, Christine or Andy?
I always feel like it's important to share the fact that. Last year, we talked a lot about addressing the $2 million issue, not using Easter funds for staffing going forward. I know there was some strong feelings about that and we did have some staffing changes last year. But I would like to point out that we are. One, not cutting staff and two, potentially adding positions back in. And when neighboring districts are cutting 10, 17, 20 positions. For us to be in the position that we are. Is what. The. Challenges that we dealt with last year was intended to do. So we, we took the hit last year to reduce any impact this year, and I believe it worked out exactly as intended.
So what about for the year after this next one, is it going to be a cut then higher cut than a higher thing? Or is it more of a foundation from last year's tough decisions? I mean, I know you're not psychic, but.
I don't know, Andy might be, are you psychic, Andy? I think that we, we have set ourselves up well, I believe, using. Revenue sources, using non, you know, we're, we're using our grants very effectively. We have used our Easter funds very effectively and, you know, we certainly can't speak to what the city budget will look like going forward. You know, the mayor was very clear at Ways and Means that. She was using one-time funds to address some increases, particularly the insurance. We had a significant insurance increase at the city level, I believe it was 17%, Andy, if that's correct. Which is a huge impact on the city budget. But I, I believe our spending plan and the way we've used funds. Sets us up as well as we can be given the uncertainty of FY26. Andy, I don't know if you want to add to that or subtract from it.
No, I mean, again, just a little more detail, if we. The other funding sources that we normally use to offset transfer, the, the budget, the transportation revolving, the special education tuition revolving that we just discussed, school choice, circuit breaker. We. In the original FY25 plan, if you remember, we actually had very little, if any, of those being used in FY25. And so now, again, not that. I'm going to say that the whole intent of the Easter funds were to do exactly what it is that we've done here. Which is, in a sense, use the Easter funds to get us through what it is that we have been through without using these other funding sources. To potentially buy, I'll say buy us time to get back on track for, I'll say, normal as normal as can be funding operations at the city and state and federal level. Of whatever normalcy is when it comes to that, but you know, so. What I, I just alluded to in the other funding sources, we're using half of what we normally anticipate for school choice in our normal years. We weren't touching transportation revolving. Funds for next year, so those are things that I'm going to say, not that we're kicking the can down the road, but to some extent we potentially are kicking the can down the road as far as, you know. I don't, I don't want to say building up the reserves because I'm sure city council people would not like to hear us, you know. Saying that we're actively doing that, but to some extent we are, it's, it's good budgeting for us to be able to sustain the educational programming that we want here. By having these funds available to us so that we can make the decisions. That we do year to year, and then I'll say also that in these times, even before COVID and the pandemic, you know, because of the funding that goes on. Long-range planning is year to year. You know, things change so frequently, both at the state level, you know, and then in some of the areas that we see some volatility in, we just talked about special education. Could have some maintenance and heating and, you know, operational things on those sides that just ends up having, making us have to make some decisions mid-year, so. All that being said, I'd say we are well positioned, knock on wood, everyone for. 25 and 26 and hopefully beyond.
It remains on my. Horizon and for FY26 that the. District will be looking to hire six to seven staff for the expansion of full year. Science and social studies in the middle school and. And we have also previously discussed potential. Staffing. Changes or adding in relation to enhancing foreign language instruction that was previously cut. So can you get out your crystal ball and say how? How confident do you feel about the ability to budget for and absorb those next year?
So one thing I'd like to put out and absolutely Kate with the redistricting that will take effect in September 25. Basically, the workaround looking at student numbers. And staff needs in anticipation of September of 25 will, will have to be redone. Almost, sorry Karen, from the start because it will have been by that point, three years from when we did our initial. Planning and not to say that our thinking was wrong, but you know, the numbers will need to be reevaluated. So when we talked about adding. Six or seven staff. That is accurate. But we will need to look at the numbers of students at the high school in eighth grade that are moving, the numbers of students at the high school at that time, how many sections we'll need of all of our courses. Class sizes at all the elementary. So at the end. To address the needs for full-time science and social studies, the over/under of numbers might not be that high. Did that make sense?
Yes.
Good. You know, so. If our class sizes at the elementary are smaller and we only need. Three of X grade level instead of five, then those two staff hopefully can move to teach at the middle school. And that's that many less new staff we have to fund, so I think that's, you know, that's a piece. Karen will get to look at as she gets partway into next year.
Okay, that kind of leads into my next question, which is, I was wondering if you have any updates in terms of how kindergarten enrollment is going?
We. Did have numbers we looked at very recently, as a matter of fact. The. Numbers, all right Karen, you're my memory aid. Four corners at this point is still floating. Around having one kindergarten. As opposed to two. The positive is at four corners, historically, the enrollment that we have about this time of the year has tended to hold. So we feel a little more confident that the enrollment at four corners is not going to fluctuate too much from here. The part that is less than. Excuse me. Less than certain is that in our other two buildings, kindergarten enrollment tends to explode as we get very close to school. And Newton is already looking high, so there is potential that we actually may need a third section of kindergarten at Newton. So we'll keep going, but I don't think we'll have a firm number for kindergarten at. Newton and potentially federal until unfortunately well into the summer.
Okay.
So we're watching, right Ms. Patnold? We're watching. But obviously if we do. If we reduce a kindergarten in any building, certainly a need to increase a kindergarten in another building, obviously are. That would be an opportunity for the staff person to stay with us, you know.
Okay, and. Just one other. Side question in relation to the elevators. Do you anticipate that work starting and being completed over the summer?
Starting for sure, that's the plan. Being completed, I can't speak to that. Karen and I met with Mike Hudrow, the facilities director today, and he shared that there's, you know, an eight to 10 week. Delay in ordering some of the parts based on what he's aware of right now. So we'll be following up. And getting that process moving along as quickly as possible. I do expect some of the work to happen or to start this summer, but. I'm not sure that I can say it'll be finished. Hopefully.
Okay. Other questions, member Childs?
None of them are immediately jumping, I apologize, I've got viral brain fog.
Okay. If there is nothing else that anyone would like to add on this item, I will move on. Okay, the other item on the agenda today is discussion. Of a school committee budget calendar, which was previously talked about at school committee and. I put together in the materials for today's meeting, a number of examples of budget calendars from other school committees. So I hope that folks had a chance to look at that and I'm going to. I'm going to see if I can master the art of sharing my screen, which I don't usually do.
If you can't, I can, so just let me know.
Okay. Okay. Okay, you might need to do that, it says host disabled attendee screen sharing. Or you could.
Again, I made you co-host, so that should enable screen sharing for you.
Okay. There we go, okay, so. In here, there are budget calendar examples from Andover, Arlington, Barnstable, Brookline, North Reading, PBD, Somerville and Uxbridge. There are plenty, there are other ones, I just. Wanted to get a good handful without being excessive, so it seemed like this was a good number. These. Are called different things, but are generally along the lines of either budget planning calendar or budget development calendar and. They. Are created differently by different committees, I'm sure according to their respective needs. So some are kind of a list format. Like Andover. Arlington is kind of similar. Barnstable is different because it has. A different kind of set of columns with. A timeframe for things to happen. Where in systems this thing happens where, for example, as a workshop in the school committee versus an administrative. Thing, what the action is and what the purpose or deliverable is on that. Which is sort of similar to other ones, I thought Brookline was a great example of alignment between. What their budget and finance subcommittee is doing next to the school committee, next to other. Entities. On the municipal side, I'm going through this really quickly because I don't, I'm not intending to. Take any actions per se today, I just wanted people to look at this. This one. Is North Reading. PBD is more general, it looks like.
That one I love.
Rather than a date. And they similarly lay it out like Barnstable in identifying which entity is responsible for the thing. Whether it's. The state or the school administration or principals and department managers, et cetera, and then what the action is. Somerville does it more. More of a linear thing, I guess, and I liked this one, the way that it was laid out in terms of what their budget and finance. Committee is doing because I appreciate that. Guidance from another, from another committee. And. And then Uxbridge, it looks very much like. Like some of the other ones, so. Everybody has this in their materials, I'm not going to keep it on my screen, I just. I wanted to share that for the public for a minute. Okay. And that should be accessible to people if they go online and look at these meeting materials, if they want to take a look or just go Google searching. Various school committee webpages and see what they have up there for budget calendars, so. I wanted to just have a, a brief discussion about. The themes that are in these examples and talk about what. What the committee might, subcommittee might wish to do or. Propose to move forward. With creating a similar document for Greenfield, so. As far as I could tell. I think that there are two main. Themes that I could pull out of all every, almost every budget calendar that I looked at from all these different school communities. So the first one was timeframes. And the most important timeframes are, of course, the ones that occur within the school administration and the school committee. And they all have similar points. In the budget process, starting with the school committee developing a budget calendar and adopting it. Which most of these committees seem to do annually. And. Then. Items that delineate when capital improvement project requests are made, when budget instructions and forms are distributed to leadership. Like building administrators and department heads and when they're due back and when the. Administration has conversations or collaborative. Reviews with them of those requests. And. I think that that piece would be helpful to have as an informational. Item. In. A budget calendar because this does, it pertains to some of the discussions that have come up recently, I think with regard to. The funding of music programs in Greenfield because we've had some people come in for a public comment who don't. Understand how the budget is developed. For this and I think it would be helpful and enlightening for people to see. When and how those departmental budgets are. Made and put forward to administration and discussed and, and all of that. made and put forward to administration and discussed and all of that. Christine?
Oh, thank you. I would like to, I guess, to share a few points. As one, I believe that everybody on this committee is aware that we work backwards from the city's budget calendar. We get the city's budget calendar, which identifies the dates that the mayor is due the budget from the school committee, and then we work backwards to the, with the public hearing requirements, and then we work backwards to the date that ads need to be placed in the newspaper based on the newspapers' timelines. So all of that really flows backwards only after we get the budget calendar from the city. The second piece, I guess, is a it's an administrative element, and I understand, Kate, your concern about people don't understand how the budget is created. I guess I'd like to share, I identified that process multiple times every year that I've done the budget. But I would strongly request that the committee not identify specific dates for administrative tasks. The date by which the superintendent presents her budget to the school committee is certainly something that's committee level, but superintendent meetings with department heads, I think a range of general time so that people see the sequence is great, but for the committee to dictate when the superintendent schedules meetings, I think is I think that those meetings are an administrative task.
I think I could be wrong, and I haven't interviewed any other of these committees that created their calendars. But I would, I would hazard a guess, and I would be happy to go do some footwork and ask people this, that the dates that they put in were not set by the committee. Probably those dates were set by their administrators who told the committee when they were doing things.
I think if that's your understanding, Kate, and that's the intent is to somewhat work backwards, given information presented by the superintendent, I think that is, that's great. But I guess I would wonder if the committee chooses to go with that detail of a calendar, if that can be clearly outlined when the budget calendar is discussed. Because your intent or the current committee's intent may not be made clear to future committees. And if the process were, you know, you're not always going to be here. Karen and Andy won't always be here and what you're just, just a thought.
Right, that calls to mind one of the one of the examples that's in the materials in which, I don't remember which one it was, but the committee sets not just a calendar, but also budget guidelines at the same time, and that seems like an important guideline that would naturally go with the calendar. Okay.
Can, if you don't mind me sharing a very positive thing, I think, from a Greenfield perspective, and I'm not sure how you would work this into the process around setting budget guidelines. Maybe Andy's had experience with this, but other districts where I have worked, where that I'm aware of, the Finance Board, big picture, at times dictates downward to the committee, like you need to bring us a budget with X percent, or you need to bring us level service or level funding. They sort of put that guideline out on the front end. And it's been a wonderful, I think a wonderful statement that the school committee and even city council in Greenfield does not do that. You, as the committee, has, has made it quite clear in three years, give us the budget that represents our needs. So is that the love, I mean, Andy, you speak to that. So I guess, Kate, my question to you is, when you say budget guidelines, what, sort of what vision did you have about what that could look like?
I don't have one. I am not proposing a specific set of guidelines or a specific type of calendar or anything, because I don't think it's up to me. It's a, this is supposed to be a committee thing, so.
I guess I didn't know if in your research, you had come across any budget guidelines that were things that you wanted to put out there, or?
No, I think that would be a couple of steps down the road. I am strictly at the calendar level at the moment.
Okay, all right, that's fair. I do want it on the record, though. I think that's a fantastic thing for Greenfield, that you've asked for a budget that represents the needs.
Okay. And where was I?
I apologize.
It's okay. I, so I noticed that most of these calendars get adopted sometime between August and November. The ones that seem to be voted on annually by their committee, which probably makes more sense as to why they have dates on them, because that's a lot closer to when the items on their calendars are going to happen. So there's probably more information available at that point in the year as to when things will occur. The meat of the budget timeframes, of course, tends to occur between December and whenever their particular school department needs to have a final budget proposal, which is quite variable. And I would also point out that these examples cover all different kinds of governmental setups on the local level. So some of them have a select board, some have a town meeting, et cetera, which we do not. So but we all are pretty familiar, I think, with the general progression during that part of the season, with the development of preliminary budget and posting and a public hearing and a committee vote and all of it. Some of these calendars spell out a little bit more clearly when or how the public may have input during that season, which I think might also be helpful for people. And that is it for the first theme. And the other theme that I noticed is among the calendars that I thought were the most helpful was alignment between city, state, administration, and committee actions, so that people can see when all these moving parts are moving and how they, how they align with each other, so that they can get a bigger picture, understanding of how budget development works. So for my part, that is one thing that I would like to see in ours.
I don't know if this information is helpful or irrelevant, but Kate, when you talked about when most of the committees were voting on the budget timeline, our memo about the FY25 budget schedule was sent from the mayor's office on October 2. So I think that is generally the timeline where we get our budget timeline from the city.
Right.
If that's helpful.
That makes sense. Member Childs, did you have any comments? Ideas, suggestions, things that you would like to point out or?
Mostly just from looking at all of the ones you've put together, just the things that I think are most valuable. Because I definitely see the superintendent's concerns about the rigid deadlines being micromanaged, and you can end up following the letter and not the spirit of the idea. But so from the packet of materials you put together, the last one, the Westwood Public Schools, the way they've got it highlighted, different colors for deliverable versus presentation. I think even if we have just a bare bones deliverable presentation calendar, that would be very helpful to the public at large. Because all the information, it exists, it just isn't in that one centralized spot.
Right, yes, it's in disparate places and it's hard for people, I think, to quickly get a comprehensive view of how this works. Yeah, okay.
Now, that calendar, of course, is a little bit too nitty gritty with here are the exact deadlines for what we're looking for, but
Right.
But it is an element from that one in particular that I really would like us to use, even if we just have an informal document in one spot.
Can you clarify exactly what you want or what you're hoping to see?
Well, I'm hoping that we could have one document that we could point the public to, to say, okay, here is where we are in the budget timeline right now, and here is when you will be getting your information on it.
Okay.
Like highlighting those presentations in particular, because everyone knows the presentations happen. But I mean, communication is such a big problem in Greenfield. There's not one source that everyone will go do to get their news. And yeah, an ad in the reporter isn't what it used to be.
Well, that's true. That also calls to mind what Christine had just said about the fact that she has presented information innumerable times about how the budget process works and what have you. But I think that the fact remains that most people don't tune into meetings such as school committee meetings, and they don't hear that and don't probably have a lot of time to go watching meetings on playback on YouTube and things like that. So I think the the goal is to have some cheat sheet, basically. Yes. Document that we can put on the website that people can just look at at a glance.
Though, on the note of comprehensive, I would worry about getting too far in the weeds, because we want something that is very easily digestible so that we can just prevent Christine and then Karen and then whoever is there a few years from now or whatever, from having to field the exact same question over and over and over again.
Yeah, I was thinking that it should be no more than two pages. Does that sound like a reasonable ballpark?
Can you remind, I'm sorry, I had a building situation. I had to answer a question about, are we talking about the budget calendar being two pages?
Yes, but I would say we could, I wouldn't want us to go two pages. I think if we can't do it in one page, then we're including too much information.
Okay. Christine, just to catch you up for a second, we were talking about we were talking about what you had said, or I was talking about what you had said before about the fact that you do present information about budget development at committee meetings. But I think our reality that we always encounter is that most people don't watch school committee meetings or city meetings and don't tune in to watch the recap or what have you. And I don't for my part, I think we, as school committee members, were elected to do this stuff, and I don't really expect people to devote tons of time to doing that. And the, the, the goal of having a budget calendar would be so that people have something that they can look at in a concise way and see at a glance that we can post on the website. So.
Yeah, so your general goal, if I can just make sure, your general goal with the budget calendar is to provide a quick FAQ for public so that they can look at it and go, oh, yeah, this is about the point in the budget timeline.
Yes, and an item that people can look at quickly on their own time, when they have time, and see when the different important things are happening in the development of the FY next budget. And I think I would like to highlight for people the points at which they can most effectively have input about that. I think we've heard a fair amount of confusion from people about that. And if we had it pointed out on our calendar, then they would know when to come in and speak to us or send email or what have you, so that they can feel heard. Are there any other priorities that you think should be attended to? In a budget calendar?
I don't know if this is for our budget calendar, but I think a point that does bear talking about at some point as we get into the next budget cycle maybe is roles, the role of the superintendent in budget development, the role of the school committee, and the role of the city council. I think it's, it's very challenging for people who don't deal with budgets day to day, which most lucky people don't have to do that, to recognize that or to, to understand that the city, the Ways and Means and city council don't have line item decision making for the school budget. They can make recommendations for the committee to consider, but that they don't dictate the spending plan of the school committee. And I think that's hard, you know, they can ask. Obviously, we present pretty micro level line item information, and they can ask questions about that, but just sort of how the how the decision making flows up and down might be helpful as we get into next year's budget cycle.
That sounds like another excellent item for budget guidelines. Okay.
I like the idea of a double sided page, you know, one side is the calendar, the other side is those guidelines, just crib sheet.
Right, right. I think probably the two things that I get the most confusion about from members of the public are really about those two things, how they can have input and be heard about things, and what, and role confusion about, about school committee. So it would be very helpful if there was something very concise and handy that people could look at and understand that better. And that's particularly important when it comes to the budget. Any other suggestions, things that are important to attend to in this? Okay, okay, so my intention is to come back to this with a, with a hmm, I don't, you don't want to call it a draft. I'll call it a preliminary draft. How about that? Because we're, we're hatching something new here in Greenfield. A lot and many other school committees obviously have such a document, but we have not had one. So it, I think will require a lot of thought, and I don't expect that we'll be ready to present something to the full committee to potentially adopt for a few months, because we'll need to have more discussion about this. All right, any other last questions, comments, anything? Okay. With that, I will move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I am a yes, member Childs?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 3:54 PM.